Okay, we'll call this meeting the order of Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, September the 10th, 2019. Row call, please.
Nayland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Jelka?
Here.
White? Little?
Here.
Would you join us in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We hand to item one, the gender received is proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two is public comments. Anybody like to speak to the board at this time is not a agenda item. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item three, claims and payments, resolution A.
The checks for this week looks, total comes out to $335,816.25. Looking through it, nothing stuck out. The big culprit was checks for secondary roads for just shy of $65,000, but pretty low checks for this month, so.
Okay.
Moves to approve?
Second.
Is there any questions? Row call, please.
Nayland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Moving to item four, presentation is promotion of the upcoming household hazardous material drop-off. Lindsay?
Good morning. Good morning. Yes, my name is Lindsay Anderson. I'm one of the two staff with the Waste Track Education Team. That's a partnership between the County Conserv-, Blackhawk County Conservation Board and Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission. I'm here just to let people know that there is another household toxic materials and electronics recycling event coming up on September 21st. So I've got some slides here. This event is paid for by the Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission. The location is cited by the city of Cedar Falls. It's at one of their public facilities. And then our Waste Track Education Team is in charge of getting all the volunteers to help out at that event. The event will take place on Saturday, September 21st, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at the Cedar Falls Public Works Complex, which is located at 2200 Technology Parkway. And that is just south of Target Distribution Center in Cedar Falls, kind of off of Hudson Road. We'll have signs up on the day of the event directing traffic where to turn, but it's kind of located out in the Prairie Lakes area of Cedar Falls. This drop-off is open for all Blackhawk County residents to get rid of items from their homes and their garages. This free event, for the most part, is a free event for getting rid of some of those materials you might have around the home. Fees do apply for certain electronics. So a wide variety of items will be accepted at this event, from household cleaners and thermometers, LED and fluorescent bulbs, liquid lawn and garden chemicals, automotive batteries, and some automotive chemicals such as engine cleaners and waxes, hobby products including stains and varnishes, adhesives, propane tanks, and other flammables. Electronic items will also be accepted for free, so things like vacuum cleaners, holiday lights, power tools, humidifiers, lamps, flat panel televisions and computer monitors, stereos, VCRs, DVD players, handheld game systems. And then, there are, there may be a charge if people have more than two CRT-containing devices. So CRT is a cathode ray tube. Older televisions and computer monitors have a cathode ray tube inside of them, and that involves having some leaded glass and other things in the structure of that item. So the commission does allow two of those CRT-containing devices for free, and any additional one is $5 apiece. So if you have a flat panel TV and a CRT, those would still be free. Let's say you had two monitors and a TV, then you would pay for that additional third CRT. No items will be accepted from businesses, churches, farms, schools, or other nonprofits. This is strictly for residential items only. A full list of accepted and not accepted items can be found at wastetrack.org. That's the Solid Waste Management Commission's website. People can call 266-8722. That is our education hotline, and you can kind of get ahold of me and ask me some questions if you have something you're not sure about. We do have some green wanted poster flyers that are available at the entry or the exit of the courthouse, also at local libraries, and this can be found on the wastetrack.org website as well. Just a reminder, due to a City of Cedar Falls ordinance, all loads coming to the event must be contained in a covered vehicle or otherwise secured, so that the material does not blow off or fall, fall off or blow out of the vehicle. There are some items that are not accepted at this event, including paint, appliances, and business waste. Some other things that are not included would be general personal care items, things that you would use on your person are not considered hazardous materials, so those are not accepted at the event. Single-use alkaline batteries, the Iowa DNR determines that those are not hazardous, so those can actually go in your regular garbage. Anything that's not considered an alkaline battery can come to the event. Some automotive oils, oil filters, and antifreeze are not accepted. Grills, mowers, furniture, other non-hazardous waste, things like that. They cannot accept any five-gallon drums or larger. They would need to contact a hazardous waste company directly if they had some large quantity materials like that. Also appliances such as microwaves, dehumidifiers, air conditioners, water heaters, those types of things are not accepted. Our wastetrack.org website, if you go to wastetrack.org backslash FAQs, that will take you to a whole list of 100-plus items and the proper ways to get rid of those and links to places where you can contact. So all those items, I just listed medicine, things like that, those are all listed on there for people to kind of have as a quick reference to find out how to properly get rid of those items. We will have approximately 60 volunteers on hand to help unload items, assist with traffic, and survey participants. So they will be unloading those for you. If you have something that's very heavy and you can get someone to help you get it into your trunk, the volunteers will get that out for you. Last spring, volunteers unloaded over 37 tons of electronics from 554 vehicles during the five-hour spring event, and they filled 123 pallets with electronics waste. There's sort of a picture at the beginning. We had a couple TVs coming in, and then by the end, you can see my coworker and our intern at the time kind of in amongst that sea of electronics there, too. So it is a good event, and it helps divert a lot of materials from the landfill. The next event will be in the spring. They've set the date for April 18th, 2020, for the spring event, too, if you are not able to make it to the fall event. And if you would like to have an email notification sent to you about the spring event or upcoming events after that, the Solid Waste Commission does have an electronics newsletter that you can sign up for on their wastetrack.org website, too. And we just send out a reminder as those events approach, and then we send out photos after the event in case you missed it. You can kind of see what was going on that day. So the commission does not share any information with outside parties. So just as a reminder, the household hazardous materials drop-off and electronics recycling event will take place on Saturday, September 21st, so not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, at the Cedar Falls Public Works Complex, 2200 Technology Parkway, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. People are invited, encouraged to go to the wastetrack.org website or call 266-8722 prior to September 19th with questions. On the 20th, we will be actually out of the office most of the day, getting set up for the event the following day. So we encourage people to call before the 19th. That way they're able to catch ahold of me, and I can answer some of their questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then, moving on to item five, receiving project updates from department heads and our elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Just very briefly, we have seen a little bit of storm damage this morning, the Shawless Road, the widened Shawless Road area in the southeast portion of the Waterloo area, that road is closed right now while we are removing several large trees that have fallen on the road. There's just some other minor storm damage around the county. To talk about construction for a minute, the Cedar Wapsi paving project we asked for is expected. They are saying they'll be back on their job today, weather permitting, but it sounds like the weather may, for this afternoon, allow them to get some paving done, and then they possibly will not be back until Friday. So there's at least four to six more days of paving on that project, so we ask the public to please be patient with us, follow our road close signs, stay off the road if you don't live on the road. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Okay, moving on to item six, minutes approved for September the 3rd, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven is a consent agenda. This be made with a single resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on that consent? Okay, row call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Nayland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item eight, contracts and agreements. Resolution, the lease agreement between Blackhawk County and Waterloo Cedar Falls Cell Tech Partnership, Skowd, Illinois, be extended for an additional five-year term, expiring October 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Rory, is that you?
Yes. Good morning, Board Maintenance Superintendent. This is just a lease renewal for an additional five years. This is for our antenna repeater located in the basement here at the courthouse, and then also over at our Pinecrest facility to allow us cellphone reception in those areas. This lease originally, was originated in 2009. The county had purchased that equipment at that time. So there is no cost to this. This is just renewing the services that that provides.
It's sufficient, then, in the basement here?
Yes, it is. Yep. Yep. U.S. cell here. If you're not on a U.S. cell here, then our reception is not so well. So this is primarily for just U.S. cell here.
Okay. Board, any other questions? Do you have a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay, row call, please.
Jelka?
Yes.
Nayland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Moving on to item nine, other business. Motion of the travel request submitted by James Perry, Finance Director, for $70 to the Iowa State Association of Counties Budgeting and Property Tax Seminar, December 2nd, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on that? James, anything?
Nope. It's, I think it's going to be very beneficial, especially going into budget season, so.
Very good. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B is a motion of travel request submitted by Deb Munger, Human Resource Director. This is for $436 to attend the National Public Employee, Employer Labor Relations Association Academy in Agony, September 11th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have anything you want to add to that one?
Morning, Board HR Director. I just apologize, I should have asked for this when I asked for the other one. It's all kind of back-to-back, so the first one is, this one is National Pell-Rough, the Thursday and Friday, it was, is the Iowa chapter. So if you sign up for this one, you actually get $100 rebate as well.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, motion of Office Finance Director, set the date of a hearing to be held at 9:05 October 1st, 2019, for the proposed FY '20 budget amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D is a resolution of taxes due and payable submitted persons, as indicated, including special assessments. This is under Iowa Code 427.9, be suspended future property taxes on the property owned by the persons.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this resolution? Row call, please.
Nayland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item E is a resolution of the taxes due and payable submitted persons, as indicated, special assessments, rates, or charges. Again, this is under Iowa Code 427.9.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Row call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Nayland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Item F is motion received, placed on file, the extral opinion certificate for FY '19 of Blackhawk County Insurance Healthcare Plan, issue checks for $100 filing fee and $9.75 for the 509A study for plan ending June 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item G, discussion on items regarding the solar project. We have guest Chuck Myers from Mid-American Energy, and will also be speaking and addressing questions on solar. Morning.
Morning, Board. Got a couple handouts here, some information for the board. Thank you. Thank you. So I'm Chuck Myers with Mid-American Energy. I was asked to attend today. Board's got some questions on some solar and stuff. I've got a little prepared statement. It says what you have in front of you. This just came out yesterday. Mid-American Energy worked with the Iowa Utility Board to create the Green Advantage Program to verify our annual production of energy delivered to customers from clean, renewable sources such as wind as a percentage of total energy produced. Mid-American Energy's customers in turn can promote their green energy, use these to employees, customers, industry partners, stakeholders, and the communities they serve. On June 21st, the Iowa Utility Board verified that 51.4% of the energy delivered to you came from renewable sources in the year of 2018. The percentage will grow annually as Mid-American Energy's wind product, projects are completed. Mid-American Energy is leading the revolution of Iowa's energy landscape, helping to make us a national leader in the percentage of electric generation moving from wind, coming from wind, excuse me. This, that plays a critical role in keeping rates in Iowa among the lowest in the country. Currently, we're about ninth lowest in the country, right around there, giving you a competitive advantage in building and maintenance, a sustainable resource business. Together, we can choose 100% renewable energy future that keeps rates low, is great for the environment, and is important for our economy. So I know the board has been looking at some solar. Got a list of about eight different accounts, Pinecrest, some of the roads departments out at the Sheriff's Training Center, said the board may have some questions. I'll do the best I can to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I think it was just general information from Mid-America. Obviously, we've had dealings with them over the last few years. Our rate that we receive is at the standard rate, or is there?
Yeah. So in Iowa, there are essentially four rates. Now, it gets more complicated than that, but there's a residential rate, which you don't qualify for because you're not a residential customer. There's a GE rate, a general energy rate, that's just electric only. There's a general demand rate. It's the same as a GE, except there's a demand on it, and what we call the LS, or large service. So out of those five or eight different accounts that Rory sent to me, you're on all three of those, the LS, the GD, and the GE. So how do we determine which rate we put you on? We put you on what we call the best rate, or the cheapest rate for the customer. So we review those twice a year for all of our accounts that we have, you know, some 700,000 accounts that we have. We review every one of those, make sure our customers are on the right rate. If they're not on the right rate, we're reaching out to the customers and saying, hey, look, you could save some money if you change to a different rate.
Obviously, we have one building with the jail and 24/7 facility, but like Pinecrest is where we're proposing to put some solar. How's that compare with like the courthouse? I mean, they're similar hours and so forth.
Yeah, so they're both on the same rate. They're both on that LS rate, that large service, and like I said, it's really based on your usage. So we take how much energy and how much power you're using in a, well, we do it in a 12-month year, and then we determine which is the best rate or the cheapest rate for the customer to be on. So yeah, the Pinecrest, the courthouse, the jail, those are all on the LS rate, that large service rate.
And would any of that change if we went to solar and needed to draw a certain percentage because it wasn't generating on a cloudy day or something? Is the rate the same?
It could be the same. It depends on how much power you're going to be generating. So it really, it comes down to the fact that a lot of these things gets determined once an application has been submitted. You submit an application, and then from that, and there's a fee that goes along with that application, depending on what level you want to apply for solar. And then we would do our engineering study based on what you provide to us, you know, how much you're planning on generating at that facility. We need to look at the grid, make sure that the grid can handle that power that you're going to potentially put back onto the grid. And then when we get done with all that engineering study, we'll come back and say, okay, look, we need to upgrade our facilities, which then you would have to pay for as well, but it kind of depends on, you know, how much you're going to be generating, where you're going to be generating it, and what the facilities are. And we can't really tell you what that is until we get that application.
So is that part of that interconnection fee?
That's exactly what I'm talking about, the interconnection fee. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So each facility would basically have that?
Yes. Yes. So if you decided you wanted to do something with eight, you'd have to have eight different interconnect agreements for each one of those. It's behind the meter, so count numbers, if you will, kind of look at it that way.
Okay. Does this board get any other questions?
I guess, how long is a process like that, or how long does it take to, from you to get the application, I guess, and to establish that?
I'm not 100% sure. I know that we have, there are some rules behind that, but I think it's within about 30 days, I want to say. I'm not going to commit to that 100%, but I think it's about 30 days.
Just an estimate.
Yeah. And it really kind of depends on, you know, the size of the project as well. So, you know, I just thought of something else. I know that Rory kind of provided the board with a fact sheet. It was a little bit outdated, but most of that information on there is still pretty much valid. There was one on there that kind of stood out to me, and on page three, that first question on page three was, you know, will Mid-American Energy do any kind of financial analysis? And it said no, and we absolutely will do that. If you want to provide us with the proposal, we'll be happy to take that and run it through because we want to represent our rates. We don't like to have a third party represent our rates because a lot of times they just use a standard 10 cents, or 8 cents, or whatever, 12 cents per KWH.
We use 3 cents, a very, very conservative estimate.
Okay. So, you know, we can take that, that proposal, and we can run it through because we know what your rates are going to be, and we can kind of give you, you know, kind of a better feel for what it is. But, you know, from the information that was provided to me, it looked like you're looking around 14, 15-year payback, probably somewhere in the right neighborhood from what, from the little experience that I've looked at with solar projects here in Blackhawk County and surrounding counties, usually we're looking at that 12 to 14-year payback for solar projects.
Rory, did you have anything you wanted to ask, or any information the board needs to have, or?
Well, last week at the workshop, the board had asked me for, to look into what the insurance would cost on these panels, and I wanted to just let you know that we are working with PDCM. They do have all eight sites. They're working with ICAP to come up with that ballpark figure on what insurance. We do not have that yet at this time. The other piece of information, I believe, was the PPA agreement, and I'm working on various layouts of what a PPA would look like with these eight facilities. So we'll have to bring that back to the board at another time.
Did PDCM indicate what type of insurance we may would use on something like this?
They, not to me. They may have to Dana. All we did is we provided all the information we could on all eight sites, whether it was a rooftop system, whether it was on the ground, and so they're looking at all of those different factors, and to try to give us the best, you know, ballpark number that they can. There's a lot of different facets they have to look at.
Did you have any other questions for Mid-America that the board should be asking and have been, or?
Well, that's why I, the other, on Friday, that's why I researched and tried to find any type of information I could with regards to Mid-American and solar. Chuck's absolutely right on that one item, and the fact that the sheet was a little outdated, but it was the best information I could find in short order. The way I look at it, any information that I can provide to the board at this time is helpful for you to be able to make your decision.
And I believe we've had, Chuck, I think you've been here before, given an update to the board, so I think basically that's all we were looking for was...
So I do want, I would like to make one comment about a purchase power agreement. It kind of ties in with the Green Advantage Program that we have. Typically, when you go into like a purchase power agreement, those green credits or whatever you want to call those, typically it would stay with the person who is, you're buying the power from. You would not get those green credits. You would not be able to, you know, tout that, hey, you know, Blackhawk County, we're, you know, for so much solar that we're, you know, green energy and stuff like that. So with the Green Advantage Program, we do have, it is certified, it is verified, excuse me, it is verified by the Iowa Utility Board, and we do have certificates that we can provide to the board. If you wanted to be able to use that, like on your websites and promote, you know, that 51.4% green energy usage from the county, you can, we can certainly get you that. Unfortunately, I don't have today this information. Like I said, just came out yesterday. We just, I just received this in my inbox yesterday, so we don't have those certificates yet, but we can certainly get you one of those if you'd like it.
I see that this sheet is touting the 100% renewable energy future, but does that mean that Mid-America has relatively immediate plans to retire your five or six coal-fired pole, or coal plants that you use as part of your operation, and to start investing in a utility-scale energy storage?
So I can't speak for which plants, or if we're going to be closing any coal-fired plants anytime soon, but we still need to have those back up, another source of generating power from when the wind doesn't blow.
Right, that's why I asked the follow-up question about the utility scale of storage.
Right. So we do have a pilot program for battery storage. I just seen that come out late last month, but it's still, you know, very preliminary, very pilot at this point. So understand, our vision for Mid-American Energy is 100% renewable by the year 2021. And so we're, that's our, that's our vision, that's our goal, to provide 100% renewable power to our customers by 2021. Now, what does that mean? So what that means is, it says this in this document, it's maybe obfuscated a little bit there, but we take all the power that our customers in Iowa use, and we take all the power that we generate from wind in the 12-month period, and you do the simple math, and you get 100%, or right now we got 51%. So you take all the wind that was, all the energy that was produced from wind in Iowa in last year, divide that by all the power that was consumed in Iowa, you get 51.4%. So there are times when you still need to have those other sources online to be able to, you know, like on a day like today where the wind's not blowing real bad, you know, real hard outside, probably not 100% on the wind generation today, so.
Right. It's just a little bit of kind of a marketing gimmick, I think. I mean, it's really remarkable, the investment, and it's really, really great. And I also want to thank the crews throughout all night restoring power, including my neighborhood.
They're still.
Yeah. And, but, but to go around saying that you're going to have 100% renewable energy in just about two years, yeah, it's just pilot programs for energy storage and no announced plans for retiring any of these coal-fired power plants is rather, I think, a misnomer.
Well, but we're going to, but we're using those coal-fired plants much, much less than we ever did before because we're generating so much power now from wind. Another nice advantage of having all the wind that we do is that, you know, you take a coal-fired plant, and it's in one physical location, and then we have to transmit that power across state to get to the other side of the state. With the, with the wind, we have the luxury of being able to put these wind farms in areas where we need that power. So it does help with that, but I don't know, I don't know of any plans to retire any of our, any of our coal-fired plants.
Thank you.
Chuck, I just had one last question. You had sent some information to us about generation distribution and compliance, and I think it mentioned something about the compliance obviously being the responsibility of the owners in this case. So could, do you know, what would that inquire, what would that require, or?
I guess I'm not sure what your question is, or?
It just, it mentions, "Subject to applicable local codes, ordinances, and safety requirements, the customer is responsible for ensuring compliance."
Yeah. So that's, that just goes, basically it says you have to meet the National Electric Code and, and all those types of things is what that's saying in short, so.
That Mid-American won't be doing that for us?
That is correct. Yeah, so you'd have to have a, one of the requirements is that you'd have to have a professional engineer provide all the drawings to Mid-American Energy. That's all part of that application process.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and if, if it doesn't meet code, we're not going to allow you to connect it to the grid. The problem, I won't say it's a problem, but the, the issue that arises when we have distributed generation, you know, solar panels that are in different locations is that, you know, on a night last, like last night, you know, if it happened during the day, power goes out. You know, we want to make sure that when these customers are generating power, they're not putting it back onto the grid because we've got linemen out there working, assuming that the power is off. And so that's part of that, that code that has to be met, those requirements, is that you have to demonstrate that, you know, when the power is off, you're not going to be putting power back onto the grid and putting linemen at risk.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Dan?
Just a couple comments. I, I like the path we're going on with solar. However, I like my energy sources, like I like my mutual funds diversified. I think this, as we proceed to the future, this is, and this is an exciting opportunity because technology is evolving in regard to energy sources. My concern with solar panels is what happens to them after their lifespan is over, into the landfill, or are they currently manufactured? I believe many of the precious metals are come from China that they use to manufacture these, and it's a country that really doesn't care about our climate. I like our diversification in energy. I really like that we can save our taxpayers money. The last thing I want to see is paint this into a corner where we end up with a dependent upon a single source that ultimately ends up costing our taxpayers more. And as our taxpayers and us as elected officials proceed, we need to educate ourselves on the evolution of these energy sources and what's out there, whether it's nuclear, coal-fired, wind, solar. But I do have concerns, as I say, you know, one is the solar panels. Where do they end up? The blades off the windmills, where do they end up when their life cycle is extended? Hopefully, technology gets better.
And, you know, like I said, you know, we're here to work with the customers, you know, a lot of times we get painted kind of with a broad brush, that Mid-American is against solar, and it's not true. We just want to make sure that our customers are making an informed decision. So whatever that decision you make, we just want to make sure that the decision you make at the time, you have all the information available to you when you make that decision because, you know, you're going to be, you know, you're stuck with that decision for, you know, 20 or 40 years down the road. So, you know, we want to make sure that you have all the information in front of you when you, when you get ready to make that decision, so.
That was really the intent on having you back today, plus the fact that, like I indicated, we have you come periodically anyway, obviously.
And don't hesitate, you know, to reach out if you have questions, you know, you know, shoot me an email, call me on the phone, you know. I can, you know, as you can tell today, I don't have all the answers, but we certainly have a lot of, I have certainly have a lot of support in our organization where I can get those answers for the board, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board, any other questions?
I don't. Chuck, I was going to say Rory, I didn't know if you were going to be available still to answer some questions or, or at least see where we were. I think somewhat relative to what Dan's talking about, the life expectancy of these, and we talked about it, I think 40, 40 years.
Right.
With technology changing as quickly as it does and as much as it does, I'm wondering what the chances are that maybe we, technology changes so that we don't have a lifetime expectancy. You know, I think about house roof or anything like that, too. We say 30-year roof span, or 30-year lifespan, but it never makes it to 30 years. So rarely, I should say, not never. But what, have you examined that, I guess, or are we just, when we talk about that, what happens if something does, I guess, where does that?
So I'd like to make a quick comment.
Oh, great.
So Mid-American has, our stance on the life expectancy of solar panels is 20 years. That's what our experts are telling us. Now, I know that solar providers and stuff have probably done it 40 years, so I just, I just kind of want to let you know that, you know, our, our position on, on that is a 20-year life expectancy on the solar panels.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, what, what we know from working with at least one of the solar vendors is that the warranty period is 25 years on these panels. They're telling us the life expectancy is 40 years. That's just information that's being provided to us. I, I don't necessarily have anything to substantiate that 40 years other than that's what, that's the information that's being provided to us. So Linda, that would have to be something that the committee could maybe do a little more research on and see, I mean, obviously, it's hard to predict the future, but that's the information that was provided to us. But I think the 20-year life expectancy that Chuck mentioned, what we do know is there's a 25-year warranty on the system. So if they were to fail within the 25 years, obviously, we would be covered.
Okay.
Following up just a little bit what Dan said, is there, if and when we decide to go the route of solar and the panels, is there an American company that, I mean, can we specify American parts or are they all from overseas?
It's a good question. I can look into that. I have no idea.
That's a key really, right there.
Yeah.
Down to the, the panels to whatever.
Yeah, that's something I'd certainly look into.
Yeah.
In the total price that you've got listed to, that 1.2 million?
Estimate.
Now, that's, yeah, just an estimate at this point in time, but I was going to say, does it include some of those interconnection fees for each of the facilities and that? Is everything included in that?
Yes, based on, again, the, the vendor that we worked with, based on their experiences on other projects that they've done, they've factored that all into that cost. We've also laid out what the cost to Mid-American, because there's still a fee that would need to be paid to Mid-American to have that line or that energy available to us if needed. And I believe that was broke out on that spreadsheet as well. I believe it was $120 per site on that, so we had an annual fee of just under $1,000.
It doesn't really say what it was for, but that's what it's for then, okay. Appreciate that.
The only thing that was not factored in that, and we kind of talked about this at the work session, because in talking with Chuck, Chuck had mentioned about the inverters and the lifespan on those being a concern. So when I reached out to the vendor that we were working with, they did concur that the lifespan was much less than the 25 years on the arrays, but they also did mention that we could add additional warranty to those inverters to match up with the arrays, add an additional cost, and that cost is not factored into that. But they said it was very minimal. Whatever their minimal means, that's something that we would have to look into.
And Linda, the other cost that's not in there is any upgrades on Mid-American's side that may have to happen, which we won't be able to determine until we get those applications. There's still, there's still going to be a little bit of an unknown there as well.
Sure, just like rates.
Yeah, well, the rates, the rates do change a little bit. We do work very hard to try to keep our rates as stable as we can. We don't forecast any rate changes for the next 15 years, so the rate should be what they are for the next 15 years at least, so.
We can hope.
Okay, board, any other questions? Thanks a lot, Chuck. I appreciate you coming and may ask you to come back again.
Anytime.
In the future.
Yep.
Okay, then.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak to? I was going to say to solar or anything.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to just take a couple minutes to address you. My name is Tyler Olson. I'm with Paulson Electric. We're at 1915 Jefferson. We've been in Waterloo for almost 50 years, 49 years, an electrical design and construction firm and a proud IBW partner as well. We started doing solar about 10 years ago, mostly for our commercial and industrial customers. We've done some small utility and also some, some government entities that have decided to do solar. Basically, when, when we go through the, the process, and it sounds like you've done some of that preliminary work already of analyzing the electricity bills at different locations and what you think the, the payback is going to be, knowing what your rates are, our customers have always made the case to us that the financial return, the dollars and cents is the priority. There are obviously a lot of other benefits that, that come with solar, as far as producing clean power, 100% renewable, you know, no carbon emissions, but ultimately, they flip to the part of our proposal that says what your payback is going to be and what that, what that dollar and cents case is. And more times than not, it's favorable. It does a couple, has a couple of big advantages. One, it'll significantly reduce your operating costs. I know that some of the analysis that you have indicated that that'd be in the tens of thousands of dollars a year, and that's consistent with projects that we've seen. Also, it locks in your electricity rates for 25 years. We use the 25-year lifespan, basically, because, as was indicated earlier, that's the warranted lifetime of the panels, the production guarantee on the panels. And so basically, you know exactly what your electricity is going to be, what that cost is going to be for 25 years. There are multiple parts to a utility rate. And so while some parts of the rate may remain constant for five, 10, 15 years, there are other parts of the rate that will not, like the fuel, the fuel part of the rate, sometimes transmission. So there, I just, I just say there are different parts of it, and while some may stay the same, others are going to grow. And it varies every year, as I'm sure you've noticed, doing, doing the finances and the, and the budget every year. But I don't think there have been too many years, at least with the customers that we've dealt with, where it's gone down. Typically, it's, it's on its way up. I really think there's a, there's a big opportunity here for Blackhawk County and as a Blackhawk County taxpayer, Blackhawk County taxpayers. There's significant savings here. I think you can lock in those rates and hedge against what will be future price increases. And so I'd urge you to consider it. I'm glad to see it on the agenda and getting a serious discussion. We're hap, we're happy to answer any questions that you have into the future. Just a couple of things I'd, I'd just address. Most of the, all of the cost as far as replacing inverters and that kind of thing, we would include in that payback formula. So even if it costs, you know, $10,000, $15,000, depending on what inverters you use, we would include that. So when your payback is 15 years, that would include that, that capital outlay, maybe again in year 12, when the inverter warranty runs out. Also, great questions, I thought, about the buy American. We're doing a project right now for the Cedar Rapids Airport where they spec'd buy American, and so we've procured all the equipment, all the panels in order to meet that, so that absolutely is a possibility.
So we can get American product throughout it?
Absolutely. A lot of, a lot of panels are produced overseas. Some overseas companies have opened production facilities in the United States, but there are, there are some American companies producing particularly panels. And because the Cedar Rapids Airport received federal funding, there are a lot of federal rules regarding buy American that came with it, and we've been able to comply with all of those. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. It's good information, really, a little bit each time, so.
So Rory, you mentioned, like, you think by next week you are going to have a lot of the information, the PPA, the insurance and the...
Yeah, that's my hope.
I mean, watch as you can.
We're working on some PPA numbers as we speak, and then the insurance would be hopefully yet this week, so.
And then he answered it as far as the American product and so forth, so. Okay, then, moving on to item 10, any reports or, no, I'm sorry, we got another discussion H is a discussion possible board action at the lump sum compensations for Helen Stephan, Billy Joe Heath for overtime, worked as the interim co-finance director. $1,354.50 for Billy Joe, I believe, and Helen was $748.20, be approved and recommended by Grant Feeder. Let's move.
I was...
Second.
Open for discussion, I was going to say. And I think everyone here knows, as far as most of us here, I think that this was something I was hoping to kind of wait until next week, just to have an opportunity to look at some of the aspects of. I know the email that Grant had sent out about the, the hours and I said, and the overtime hours as well as the amounts paid. And I, I just thought it was, I wanted to take a little bit of time, and that was asking Debbie maybe for some of the policy information, just to make sure that the policies were correct. But I guess bottom line, what it, I guess for me, it was looking at the fact that we were calling it a bonus, we were doing some of the things, and that's been changed now, I see, in the agenda.
Lump sum.
That we're just calling it lump sum compensation. But it was looking at several aspects of this, I guess, making sure that we were being fair and equitable to the staff, making sure that we recognized the work that they did because I think most of us had no idea it was done behind the scenes, and the value for that, and just making sure that we were being fair in how we addressed it. And knowing that there were several things about this particular position, and maybe there have been others, I'm not saying there haven't been other positions that have probably fallen into this category, but because we worked so closely with the finance director, I guess it was seeing that how important it was to us that the two individuals that stepped up to do this, when we first called it a bonus, it was like, no, in no way was I, did I think it was a bonus because they really weren't given a choice. This is just something they willingly stepped up to do. And I think the, the work that was done, like I said, has been commendable that you guys carried the load you did for the, I know we thought it would be two to three months and that you did, and certainly appreciate that. But the fact that we looked at it as, excuse me, co-interim finance directors, and at some point also designated a 5% increase for each of them, and, and really what concerned me, I guess, is that we didn't take time to look at what those tasks were going to be and how that compensation was paid. And maybe 5% was fine, maybe if not, but that we didn't take a look at it then, and I apologize that I didn't bring it up sooner. But how we did it was very different from typically an interim position and for other department heads, which would be receiving the 10%. Debbie did furnish some policies on it, apparently there, and Debbie, please clarify if I'm speaking incorrectly, that as far as the non-bargaining exempt people, I don't think there is a rate for them to receive overtime. That's just accepted as a Department of Labor kind of standard. And the interim was the 10% rate adjustment for others that we didn't do for this. So I was just, I guess, wanting the board to, what we saw, the email that Grant presented, he talked about the overtime that actually became overtime for these individuals, not just that they did it as part of the job. And I can, I want to say a couple of things, I guess, before I go any further. The two individuals that did this, in no way at any time have asked for our assistance, have asked for us to look at this, have asked, have denied doing any of the work that was done. They just stepped up, did it, and even without asking and telling us what was being done, they did. And they worked for hours with Susan before she left, from the time she said that she was leaving until she left, just preparing for what needed to be done and how to do it and so that we didn't miss any steps. I fully recognize that they didn't replace the finance director and didn't do that every obligation that she had, but they certainly, we didn't lose any steps along the way, and thank you for that. But I guess, like I say, they had nothing to do with that. I just want us to take a look at that, and, and maybe it's something, as we said, too, maybe that needs to change in the future. I know when I asked Debbie about the policies, and I didn't get into great detail in looking at them, but she said, you know, maybe it is something we need to look at in the future. Maybe it, take a look at how people are being compensated for that. And my response really was, maybe it's not something we do look at in the future, maybe it's something we take a look at soon, or we do it now. We should be looking at those things and evaluating them if they need to be changed so that we are paying people equitably. I think it's a disadvantage. I think they, these individuals were so careful to document. I've never seen more thorough documentation of a time log of what they have done, and I know I could bet my life on it, that it in no way is comprehensive of the work that they did, and they didn't document everything. So I know they went above and beyond when they even noted the hours of overtime they worked, and these were actual hours above the 80 hours per pay period. Not to put them on the spot, but I know Billy recognized 63 hours and Helen 52.8. They didn't say that was for the finance director, so they even broke it out further that they, they worked a lot of hours in their own department for their own work and trying to get that done. I know the work they did for us added to that, but they only gave us the portions of about half of that amount for, that they worked of actual overtime on weekends, evenings, and, and that type of thing. So because we have no rate that is paid, we said this was an overtime, definitely is overtime no matter what we call it, whether we call it compensation, lump sum, or whether we called it a bonus. I, I just thought there were things I wanted to ask the board, and that's what I was hoping to not have to do it today in a public session, but we wanted to put that on the agenda, and so I was happy to discuss my, my concerns about it, just that we want to be fair and equitable to staff. I'm going forward now, I'm going forward, and I don't know how the board feels about it, but I just said that this, some of this work will continue, no doubt, with our new finance director. It's certainly not done, and we certainly want to not take advantage of anyone.
We still have Susan coming in.
And we will.
And I believe you worked this weekend, James, with Susan.
Yes.
Do you, two individuals have a concern with this agenda item today?
No, I don't think these individuals had a concern with the item anyway. They were willing to accept whatever we had. They were willing to accept whatever we had.
Well, this came from Grant, so I'm assuming Grant got it from them. I mean, as far as the number amount or...
Yes, we discussed in detail the hours that Linda's talking about, and talked about what would be an equitable rate, understanding that they can't be paid overtime as exempt employees, so it has to be looked at as some extra compensation. And the only way you could really try to calculate that is based on the hours worked. And so like Linda said, they came up with all the hours they worked overtime and did their best to indicate which of those hours were caused by the finance director work.
I believe, I can't ever remember that we had a situation where we had co-interim directors. I think that's the first time that came about, so it was kind of a unique situation in that fact there. But anyway, are you, I don't know if we should hold this up. You want us to hold this up today and not vote on this?
Well, I don't...
I guess I'm asking the employees, I mean...
I don't know what's the board's feelings too, but I was going to say, I don't think the staff has been pushing to have the checks as well.
Are you saying you want, you want to increase the amount or what?
I, well, I thought when I looked at the amounts too from the work they've done, they've worked on three, three months plus.
I mean, I, I'm just asking you, what do you want?
And that's why I wanted more information. That's why I said they got a 5% increase. I'm not even sure what that equated to, but I would like to know that, and in addition to this, those types of things. I know some of the work they did, like I said.
Is this number here reflect the overtime hours or...
There were two spreadsheets attached that, each of them filled out their own spreadsheets. And they gave the number of hours that they worked, total extra hours in the pay period. They broke it down by pay period and determined how many total hours they worked as interim co-finance directors. And they didn't claim all of those hours. They only claimed the hours that were overtime that could be attributed to the work as finance director. So in one case, 69.2 total hours worked as interim co-finance director, but only 31.5 hours asking to be paid. And in the other case, 42.4 total hours worked as interim co-finance director, only asking for 17.4 hours to be paid.
So is this, this number here then, is this after the finance director was hired?
No, none of this, none of this is after James's hire date of eight twenty-six. It all starts from the time that Linda left and goes through the pay period before James started.
Susan. Through the twenty-sixth, seventeen through the twenty-sixth.
So, I'm sorry, when Susan left.
So that's these hours too, plus the 5% then?
This does not include any of the hours that they got 5% for. This is all over and above
Okay.
regular 80-hour pay period.
I, I think this should be re-tabulated, and if I can rescind.
Yeah, I mean, we don't take action. This number is what came to the board. The board didn't create this number, and if the employees want to sit down with Grant and recalculate it, I mean...
I'd just assume a word for all the overtime work, because logic stands that they would have had fewer overtime hours working on auditor's office-related stuff had they not been spending some of the regular daytime hours working on finance director issues. And so I think that, and I think we do need to reexamine the 5%. I want to come up with something that works for everybody, whether it's that we're looking at hours worked or just a different percentage, because I think what we were hearing is that it was coming to like under a hundred dollars per pay period for all this extra work, and that was, I found that, that upset me when I found that out, because they were doing such, so much hard work, and we were, at the same time, saving all this money that by not having the position filled while we were looking. And so I do agree, we need to find a, find something that we can work, that would work in most, if not all, scenarios like this going forward.
Make a motion, we table this for three weeks.
And Grant, I guess, will wait, I'd rather not put any time limit on it, we'll just wait until Grant gets with his employees and figures out what the amount is, I guess is what we're going to do.
We did give you a proposal based on what the employees thought was fair. Unless you give us some direction on how to change it, I don't know what else we're going to give you. Chris, you brought up the fact that some of the hours that they worked, like during a regular shift, that caused them to work overtime for their regular job, I asked them to factor that in, so that if they were working, say, two hours as finance director during their regular shift, and that caused them to work two hours overtime for their regular job, they should consider that as hours they should be paid for. So we can go back and come up with a different proposal, but I guess I'd like a little guidance from the board as to what you'd like it to include.
I think we can come up with something that we think too, that if we've got your proposal or what it was initially, and I think then our questions as far as being answered and addressed and what we'd like to look at, I think that's up to the board. Because I don't think you see your numbers changing, and I'm not asking staff to talk about that.
So do you want to, are you asking that we have discussion then at the board table again on this?
Today, you mean? No.
Well, next week or the week after?
Well, and not to delay, no payment to these individuals too, who've worked hard for it. I know, so sooner is better, but yes.
Okay, so board, when do you want to have this discussion? Because we're almost going to have to do it at a board meeting to have all of us involved in it.
Well, we can, yeah, I don't know, next week if they're calling and we're not ready.
So you want it on the agenda for next week?
Yes.
Sure.
And what do you want on the agenda, so we know clearly what we're going to put?
Well, I think what they tabulated is less than what they actually did. I think Linda has a good foundation, based on information we have received thus far, for a good basis for appropriate compensation, and this apparently is too low, based on what I'm hearing and what I've seen.
So you want that discussion on that next week, or you want to have a new number next week?
I'd be fine with a new number based on, I mean, it just goes to, I think this goes to show the dedication of these two employees to ensure our county operations continue. They did extra work, the extra work that they did do was, can be probably be articulated by Grant, obviously can be articulated by the employees, and the numbers they gave us are simply underinflated, I guess is a good term.
Okay. So Grant, I think what we're hearing from the board is they want you to recalculate the hours, is that correct?
Well, let's take a look at the hours and the weight and salary too. So whatever that comes up to be, the board will see it before it goes on an agenda and the documentation for it or whatever, so.
I agree with that.
I don't know that we have to decide today how we're going to...
Well, we don't. I mean, it's going to be on next week, that's what you want, right?
Yes.
But I mean, we got to be able to have the discussion, it's going to have to be done here, we can't do it back there in the closed doors.
I'd also like to make a quick comment here. During, during the auditing, when the auditors were here last week, these two individuals actually took that on. So when I was, when I was kind of getting my feet wet, learning the job, doing that kind of thing, they actually just took care of the auditors, and that is something that, you know, the finance director would primarily do. So I think that kind of goes to show their continued dedication to helping this position and helping me out, so I think that should be considered.
I don't think there's a question on any of that. I think the question is how to, to make it right. And five of us are going to have to do that, we can't have one individual sit up here and open up the numbers.
No, but if all five of us come up with our own solution, that's fine, we can still look at all five.
Oh, we put all five on the board then.
If you want to do it, we can do one, we can take a look at it, yeah.
Well, I think based on our discussion so far, Grant, do you have an idea of where we're going, and could you come up with a proposal?
Yes, I think I know what each individual supervisor wants.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
That embraces all of that. There, you know, you've given us information that you think that it's not enough compensation, so I certainly would welcome that. So we will look at it and come up with a different basis for compensation, we'll send it to you. You can evaluate it on your own before the meeting and then at the meeting.
We can add to it. I know we're putting you on the spot then, and staff as well, and so I said, some of that's our responsibility to, to talk with you or converse with you or, and all of us as well. So you need input from us as well too. James was helpful just even in his comment there too, but I thought, yeah, the, some of the things that got done, you know, with the closing of the country view, the preparing for the audit, all those things that happened in those two and three months, we didn't have to be involved with that at all. It just, they did it without missing a step. So it was, it was just like, you know, we didn't give it a second thought, and I just thought, and there were so many other things, budget amendments and things that weren't part of it, but I just thought, I just wanted us to look at it.
You come up with something, Grant, and we'll come up with something. Maybe between the two, we can add them together.
Yeah, I think between all of us, we'll come up with something.
And I think, oh, I'm sorry, I was going to say, I think one additional step is to have the policy committee look at what kind of the, what's a long-term solution is that would work, because just more equitably in these types of situations, this stuff's going to happen.
Yeah, that's kind of a sidebar. We'll take a look at that, the policy. I talked to Deb on that the other day. She kind of indicated she thought our policy was fairly good. Again, this was a rare situation. Like I said, I've never seen two co, you know, interim directors, and then we also voted and brought Susan on, who's still on board right now. But we can do whatever, whatever anybody wants to do.
Well, I remember when we had the discussion about what we were going to have to pay somebody to come in and do the work for us, and we ran that 200 to 250 dollars an hour.
Right. So let's, let's get something from Grant, and then you each one can add your amount to it, and you can either add it to what Grant's got, or multiply it or whatever, and we'll put it back on the agenda for approval. How's that sound?
It sounds good.
It sounds good.
Okay, then.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that?
No.
Okay, moving on to item I, discussion on funding request applications.
Okay, this is just the next step in that funding request application the board discussed during budget time about having a more formalized process put on our website and for the application. Much of the information here is taken from like the solid waste commission funding stream that we used several years ago, as well as taking a look at other counties, and Dana was very helpful in getting this prepared. The first three pages of this were, are just showing you what would probably be listed on the website, and then the last three pages or so were the actual questions. And I won't, I know you were all sent this electronically, so you've all probably seen it, but I just thought I'd just review it very quickly, and it would show that that link in the first paragraph would link automatically, obviously, to the application process. And even after looking at this yesterday, I saw, noticed that we had a mistake in it already from the year-end presentation. I don't know if anybody's taken a look at those dates, those are typically dates we probably work with in budget cycles, but the year-end presentation, we had the wrong year. Obviously, it wouldn't be done until 2021. And, and that was something we haven't really done previously too, but have that year-end presentation, asking the projects that were funded to come back and tell us, you know, what they've done, but that's really because we've limited it to so few. Everything else in there, scheduling during the budget sessions, the presentations, probably 10 minutes, but there's something, this is all something the board can change. Instructions submitted to Dana, as far as when they get those applications to be eligible, they must be located or have a branch location in Blackhawk County, directly benefit the residents of Blackhawk County, be a 501(c)(3) as recognized by Internal Revenue Service, and the funds primarily. Now, these are, like I say, all subject to change, the board has a desire to, were for programs and capital projects, and primarily stating that so that they wouldn't be operational funds we were looking to support. Doesn't mean, I suppose, we couldn't, but that would typically be not. Some of the evaluation criteria, I don't know, that's on the last page there, the board demonstrates economic impact or community development, has potential for long-term impact, serves a broad segment of the population, clearly describes the project goals, demonstrates plans for future funding for the project program, looking at sustainability being a possibility that we have on there.
I think the other original one had something on there about couldn't be used for salaries.
Well, would you like that added in?
Well, it was, the intent wasn't to support salaries, because it's not long-term, they may not get it next year, or it's sustainable or so forth. And then there was, are all of them 501(c) that we give? Because I know the last couple of years, for some reason, we've been going through some that we never have before, because, I'll give you examples, was Met was one, library, I don't know if they're 501(c)(3)'s, but they're not really in the same categories of nonprofits.
No, and that's why I thought those were...
And we never used, they were kind of like automatics, even though the number, I think libraries by code or something, and so I, now I...
I would, I would suggest thinking in this year's budget process, because they really are kind of two different things, that we, instead of presenting them all together, that we have those be two kind of separate discussions.
And see, there's, there's a few more too that we've never done before. It was just really the agencies that fell under the solid waste monies.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, but I know last two years, for some reason, we were talking about all of them.
And, oh, go ahead, Chris.
I was just going to say something about the, I kind of like how it's worded right now that it, that priority is given for program and capital projects, but we don't explicitly completely rule out that something could be used for salaries, because there can be, especially for the smaller nonprofits, or it could be a one-year project that somebody's looking at doing, where so many other grants out there limit the use of grant funding for salaries, that it really kind of hampers nonprofits.
I know, Lincoln under community services that we allocate for the three agencies.
Right.
One of the stipulations is no salaries.
Right.
For services only.
And I think that we can, you know, have it be clear that we're giving preference too, but I'd like to have the flexibility, if somebody's making a really solid argument for why they need to use a little chunk of this portion for salaries, I guess I'd like just hear their, their argument, but have it, leave it so that it's clear that our preference is for, for capital and programming.
But not excluded.
But not, yeah.
Not excluded, yeah.
I agree.
And you did say somewhere in here, this is all based on if funding's available, I believe.
Yes, and the amount. I said, I know we probably start slow, I didn't think we needed to put anything in there as far as the amount.
No, well, you don't know from year to year what, if you have anybody to put in there.
And it changes from year to year, plus we can also change this format or this form or something about it, you know, as we need to as well, if something doesn't work or we find out it's confusing.
Tom brings up a good question though about the nonprofit 501(c)(3).
Well, the question, to answer that, I said, there's a Metro funders that meet every other month, and that is all the primary providers of, I'm going to say Blackhawk Gaming is one, but I said there's Lincoln Savings Bank, there's, you know, United Way, there's just several, there's about 15 groups that, that meet and are part of that. And that was one of the questions I did ask them, if any of them funded anyone that wasn't a 501(c)(3), and they said no, that that was kind of the stipulation, community-wide, they wanted to follow for the needs of...
The ones I brought up, I don't think they fall under this category, to be honest.
No.
Right.
And the Met Transit and some of those that we've talked about too, those are...
There's a couple more, and I can't think of them, what they are. And the basic ones, we know which ones they are, I mean, we have them every year and...
They typically, I don't think, would apply for grant funds, they just come to the county for
Yeah.
Part of their operational funds.
And I think, yeah, because I do, I know we fund three of them through community services.
Oh, sure. Eastside Ministerial, Jesse Cosby.
And Operation Threshold, so.
And I think that that's a little bit more of a, that we're contracting the services out to them versus that they're applying.
It's for services is what it is.
For a grant from us.
Because we always do operation.
Yeah, we pay, we pay for it, they cement the voucher and then we pay for it.
Because I wouldn't see them falling under this application process, since it's a contract that they work under.
You wouldn't.
No. No.
No, no, that's separate from the Operation Threshold grant that they usually come to us for.
And we've had a raise with that about every year, I believe, he's increased that 3%, so.
Does the timeline work? I was going to say for everybody to maybe go back in the next week or so then to approve.
Yes.
Because I thought so that they could do, start doing submissions.
Yeah, because these dates are sneaking up on us quite quickly. It got here before, yes.
True, okay. That was all, like I said, that discussion was just to, I wanted to hear board input.
Okay, does it say, are we notifying them or are they going to notify us?
Of us notifying them of when we would do, what they would, the grant award?
No, I think last year we hadn't heard from some of them, so we made the phone call. And the question was, why would we be doing that if, you know, they need to apply and go through the process?
And I think that was part of why we wanted to do, go so public with it and put it out so everybody can see and everybody can apply.
It's not automatic from here to here that they're going to get the funding.
But I did think Dana mentioned something about contacting those that had been participants before, just to let them know it was on the website.
Yeah, I, I think just for this initial year of doing this in a new format, we, that we would notify people that have been involved in the past. And, you know, one press release going out, but then going forward, it's, it's your, your job to be, just like it is for any other foundation they'd be applying towards. It's their job to keep track of those calendars. But, but since we're changing things up, I think we, we put something out initially.
Looking over if you got any changes, make sure we try to get those made before we put it on a future agenda.
Sure, yeah, do that right away.
Okay, is there anything else? Board?
I just want to, the, the gentleman that keep, that kept coming from DUR. I know Tom worked on this, Chris worked on it, Linda. That, that situation has improved. And when the citizens, that's good. Come to us, come to us with your problems so we can address them.
You said you went out yesterday.
I went out Sunday and the property looks 100% better.
Yeah, they finally sold it.
Yeah.
And.
Is that shed down yet?
I didn't see a shed.
I'm going over.
I heard about the raccoons and the mess it was and it's.
It's, it's been off and on for probably the last six, seven, eight years. Oh, Rory, I think we knew it was sold here.
Well, we, we.
Norm was in across the street.
Had discussions about it being sold. I don't know if that's actually been completed, but I think it's in the works.
I was told it was sold, but.
Yes, the shed is down. The area has been somewhat excavated, leveled out. There was a tree, I think, that was down by the house. It's been cleaned up, so it's definitely much, much better over there. And, and I believe the process is in motion for the sale, so.
Sure, great.
Yeah, much improved.
And thanks Rory for what you did because that put, I mean, my position is if you possess property and you can't take care of it, sell it. And that's what he did. So thanks Rory for the pressure.
Yep, they put a lot of time in that place.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just add to that, if you're talking about information from the board, we talked about that IT assessment. And I did get back to him and ask if it was possible to do it on a Tuesday. He said, yes, but it would have to be the 24th. So if that works for everyone, we'll be here and he'll be part of the program then on the 24th.
That's just, he's just going to give a presentation the 24th?
Well, not just the presentation, but he's coming in, I guess, to get information from us, what we expect.
Okay, but I mean, is he coming to the board meeting or is he just going to be here the 24th?
Well, he said he'll come to the, I mean, it's any way we want to do it. He just said he's available that Tuesday, I assumed we'd do it.
It's fine.
I'll probably appear by telephone that day because I'll be in Colorado.
What would you rather do another day when you can be present though? I was going to say.
If the majority of the board is, if, if four of you are here, I'm fine with that.
Well, we can check, okay.
Okay, anybody else, Chris?
Uh, no big updates today.
I thought you were going to say something. Okay, with that, do we not accept the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Suppose we are adjourned.